This program is brought to you by Cable Franchise V's and generous donations from viewers like you.
Seeing the presence of a quorum, I'm calling to order this meeting of the Regional School Committee at 6:33 PM on Tuesday, October 20th. And we'll start with a roll call attendance. Mr. Demling.
Demling present.
Mr. Harrington.
Harrington present.
Ms. Kenny.
Kenny present.
Ms. Lord.
Lord present.
Ms. Seeger.
Seeger present.
Ms. Spitzer.
Spitzer present.
Ms. Stanser.
Stanser present.
And McDonald present. And Mr. Sullivan is not yet here. And we also have Ms. -- our student representative, Ms. Gribko. Can you hear us? And Dr. Morris and Ms. Charkas. So our first order of business, I'm going to call -- move that we enter into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation of AFSCME. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation position of the public body, and the chair so declares, I declare, and with intention of returning to open session. Is there a second?
Lord second.
Move by McDonald, second by Lord. And we will take a roll call vote. Mr. Demling.
Demling aye.
Mr. Harrington.
Harrington aye.
Ms. Kenny.
Kenny aye.
Ms. Lord.
Lord aye.
Ms. Seeger.
Seeger aye.
Ms. Spitzer.
Spitzer aye.
Ms. Stanser.
Stanser aye.
Mr. Sullivan.
All abstained since I just joined.
Thanks. And McDonald aye. The motion passes 8-0-1. One abstain. So welcome back to finished session. And our first order is public comment. And I will note, we have two public comment periods this evening. We have one during the region only meeting, and then another public comment period during the joint meeting topics. Several individuals submitted public comment and labeled it specifically as for region, and others did not. And so for the most part, if it was not labeled specifically as being for the region, I'm including it in the joint meeting public comment. And for the most part, unless somebody specific even -- Actually, that's all I'll say at this point. And so I will share my screen. We have just a couple for -- for the region. Okay. Can folks see this screen? Sorry, can folks see the public comment? Yeah, okay. So as mentioned, we will -- any comments that were not specifically marked as being for the region will be covered in our joint meeting, not public comment. And with that, move on to the next item, which is our memorandum of agreement. Vote for AFSCME. And based on a discussion that we -- that the committee just had, we will follow a similar approach as we had with our other bargaining units and hold off on voting until after their membership has voted and ratified this memorandum of agreement. So we will take this back up at a future regional school committee meeting. Moving on, I will let the -- our Pelham colleagues, the rest of our Pelham colleagues know that we are moving on to our joint meeting. And while they're joining us, I'll call to order this meeting of the Amherst School Committee at 7:04 PM on Tuesday, October 20th. And I will ask, take a roll call attendance. Mr. Demling.
Demling present.
Mr. Harrington.
Harrington present.
Ms. Lord.
Lord present.
Ms. Spitzer.
Spitzer present.
And McDonald present. And we'll pause till Ms. Hall and Ms. Barlow are able to join us. Chair Hall, we've already called the Amherst School Committee to order, so whenever you're ready to call the Pelham School Committee to order, you may.
Okay. Sorry to sit here with that dumb look on my face. Didn't realize you were waiting for me. Sorry. Finally, seeing the presence of a quorum, I'll call to order this meeting of the Pelham School Committee at 7:05, and we'll start with roll call attendance. Mr. Manino.
Manino present.
Ms. Kenny.
Kenny present.
Ms. Stanser.
Stanser present.
And I do not see Ms. Barlow on my screen. Okay. And Hall present. Thank you, Chair McDonald.
So our first order for the -- is to approve the minutes of September 29th. Our agenda also said October 6th, but I don't believe that we -- those were included in our packet. So we will review September 29th only tonight. Mr. Demling.
Just one minor change on number nine. Minimum Contribution Act changed to Minimum Contribution Study.
Ms. Spitzer.
Another small edit. The third paragraph on page three, where it's talking about the CARES Act, I just think it should be all caps.
Ms. Hall.
Just a small cleanup thing in number five. Approving the minutes. I move to approve the minutes for Pelham, not for the region.
Under item six, the voice messages. The gentleman's name is TED, T-E-D, Soulos, S-O-U-L-O-S. I also had under item 10, the second paragraph. The first sentence, it says, "And the results are that we will need major renovations after the first round of testing." I don't believe that that's what Dr. Morris said. I don't know if it was mine -- minor renovations? If that fixes that, okay.
Yeah. I would say updates. And renovations, to me, sounds like ripping things out of walls and replacing them. And what we need was people to go into the machines and make fixes more than renovations. I'll look at Mr. Harrington, who has better language for this stuff than me, and he's giving me a thumbs up, so I'll go with it.
Minor updates. And on the top of the next page, it says that Fort River, Wildwood, and Pelham tested at four air changes per hour. Cracker Farm had areas that tested low as well. I'm not sure. Was it low, or some rooms were low?
Yeah, so there were -- there was a couple rooms that were low.
Okay, so that's correct then. Okay. I think that was all I -- oh, no. On page four. Just above section D, it says, "Ms. Seeger is interested in watching how this comes together. Dr. Morris said most people do not have goals to reflect on." And I think it sort of -- it should be, "Most people do not have as a goal to reflect." And then under D. Agenda planning, we are meeting next Tuesday to discuss. It should say, "Meeting next Tuesday in executive session to discuss APEA negotiations." Mr. Harrington.
Yes, so the fourth page, three -- third paragraph down, said Mr. Harrington shared a video that will clarify this vision. The other video, the two videos that I put were more about the process of the evaluation than anything else. And that's all I have.
I appreciated having those links in the minutes, so -- because we lose them when they're shared in the chat. So thank you, Ms. Charkas, for including them. Any other edits? Mr. Harrington, do you have? Okay. So I'll move for the region to approve the minutes of September 29th. Is there a second?
Second.
Move by McDonald, second by Spitzer. And we'll take a roll call vote. Mr. Demling.
Demling aye.
Mr. Harrington.
Harrington aye.
Ms. Kenny.
Kenny aye.
Ms. Lord.
Lord aye.
Ms. Seeger.
Seeger aye.
Ms. Spitzer.
Spitzer aye.
Ms. Stanser.
Stanser aye.
Mr. Sullivan.
Sullivan aye.
And McDonald aye. Motion passes for the region, nine to zero. Ms. Hall.
All right. I'll move that Pelham accept the minutes of September 29th. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, move by Hall, second advice Stanser. And we'll do a roll call vote. Ms. Stanser.
Stanser aye.
Mr. Manino.
Manino aye.
Ms. Kenny.
Kenny aye.
And Hall aye. Thank you.
I'll move for the Amherst School Committee to accept the meeting minutes as edited. Is there a second?
Second.
Move by McDonald, second by Spitzer. We'll take a roll call vote. Mr. Demling.
Demling aye.
Mr. Harrington.
Harrington aye.
Ms. Lord.
Lord aye.
Ms. Spitzer.
Spitzer aye.
And McDonald aye. The motion passes, five to zero. Okay. And now we will move on. Our next item is public comment. And as mentioned, the -- this includes, as I mentioned in the regional school committee meeting, this includes comments that were not clear whether they were intended for region or joint. So if -- I won't go into -- I won't say more. For those who submitted email comments after 5 o'clock, so I made -- continue to accept public comment through 5 PM, given the late notice of the late email from the district. And -- but a comment that was received after 5 PM, we will share at our next meeting, which the region has posted a meeting for Thursday of this week. So I will start with the voicemail comments, and then we'll move on to the printed comments.
My name is Stephanie Hawkman. I'm a resident of Pelham and a parent of an eighth grader and ninth grader. Today's announcement by Dr. Morris stating that Phase One learning is returning to remote education is extremely disappointing. I do not know what is worse. The fact that we are allowing cases in towns and counties around us to dictate the decisions for our children, or the fact that the negotiations that resulted in these outrageous metrics were done behind closed doors with people who only had the interest of faculty and staff in mind. Our teachers and staff are absolutely important and vital to the education of our children, but they are no more important than our students. Those should be the main focus of all negotiations and the focal point of all decisions. The students in our community. The students have obviously been the furthest thing from the minds of those who negotiated the APEA contract. And the metrics do not reflect our community and what our families and students want and deserve. Our students in our four towns have done their part, they say, but they are being punished. Our education system is teaching them that their actions, their conscientious efforts will not be rewarded, but instead punished. If the negotiated metrics included towns outside those of our district because teachers live outside our district, or students choose our district for learning, then I suggest we not allow school choice, or we no longer pay my tax dollars to those who choose to live in other towns. I choose to pay high tax dollars so my students could go to a diverse school with excellent education, not to sit at home, learning remotely, frustrated from isolation, and anxious on the slightest internet issue, right? Just because someone who lives in Greensville or Springfield are not doing their part or being as smart as my kids. If this elected school committee and hired administration can't take emergency action to remedy this situation and make the metrics representative of our community, then it should not be surprised when the inequity that results and most people no longer live in our diverse community for them to administer. The sorts of decisions that do not affect our four towns means that those with means will leave for institutions that can't provide in-person instruction without such egregious hurdles, or to pay resources to supplement their children's education. Those with means will help their children, but that means the education gap widens for those in our community that do not have meaning. They will suffer the most. Your actions mean those living in Amherst and our four towns will suffer, but those in Springfield and other towns, which are causing harm to our community, will not be impacted in the same way. The negotiated metrics do not reflect our community, and they are creating insurmountable barriers to education. Your decision, if not immediately acted upon and changed, will create such a high barrier that those in our community will never scale a wall to actually participate in equitable education. Please.
Hello, my name is Aliy Mera, and I live in Amherst. And I'm a mom of a kindergarten and 10th grader in the Amherst school system. I just read the email from Michael Morris. I am very, very frustrated. I don't understand how the school is canceling in person when these numbers does not. They're not looking at the metrics in our town. It's from Springfield and other areas outside of Amherst. And their decisions impacting the quality of education that my son and my daughter are currently receiving. Not only that, it's also affecting my job. Because I work as a preschool teacher for the University of Massachusetts, and we are currently open and going on the furlough. And we have to cover the floor. And I have to be at home to virtual learn my son, instead of being in my job helping the other teachers, who are mandated to work. I am very, very frustrated, and I do not understand how this metric from outside of our town is impacting the education that my son, my kids, are choosing. I chose to stay in Amherst because of the quality of education that we give to our children. As a person who went to school here, I always brag about Amherst, but this is beyond frustration. And it is unacceptable that we continue to go through this, and you're impacting the children's social emotional skills, their mental health, and the parents. I have no -- I have nothing else to say. Just, it's very -- it's unbelievable and very frustrating. And I don't think there's enough words to describe the emotions that a lot of the parents in the Amherst school system are feeling right now. Thank you for listening.
Dear school committee, APEA, and administrators, my name is Renata Shepard. My children are in second and 10th grade. These recent news, the cases in Springfield, will push our in-person start even further. It's not only upsetting, but it is a decision that does not make sense for our area. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Gerald Downs, and I'm a parent of a student in Amherst. And I just want to state my disgust, frankly, at having to shift back to remote learning. I think that this remote learning is a poor substitute for face-to-face learning. I think our students are suffering, particularly the youngest student. My -- the youngest students. My child is in second grade, and this is absolutely not good for him. I'm very frustrated that the numbers that were great to are far too low. These numbers are not in Amherst. They're not due to UMass. They're not due to some of the surrounding towns either, like Pelham or Shrewsbury. So I do not understand why these triggers a shift back to remote learning when it's so clearly having an adverse effect on our students. I beg you to reconsider. I think that this is a mistake to shift back, particularly at this time of year, when it's more possible to have windows open, to have all sorts of outdoor activities compared to later in the year, when cases may well go back up and weather will be more harsh for those kinds of remedies. I'm happy to talk about this more. My telephone number is 413-559.
Hello, my name is Nat Lackner. I live in Amherst. My daughter is a first grader at Fort River. I'm calling to just express my frustration about tools closing next week. I think that the agreement with the teachers' union is totally absurd in that we've tied the fate of the education of the children in our town and our district to other counties and other schools, which has no logical sense to me. It just seems designed to cause tools to close more quickly. On a personal level, my daughter has been back at school for four days now. She'll get another three this week. And she's been so, so happy. The night before her first day, she was bouncing off the walls with expectation she'd come home okay. So happy, just talking nonstop about how much she's having fun with her friends and, like, just teachers. But beyond just the personal side, and she is unprompted now several times with how much more she learns when she's at school. And how much she'll on the computer, even though I know the teachers are doing their best, she doesn't learn nearly as much. And the fact that a six-year-old can glean that means it's pretty darn obvious. And the adults should be able to see that clearly as well. So to summarize, I'm just incredibly frustrated and angry. I feel like the best interest of the children in our town are being backed up by other reasons, which I can't understand at all. And that if we actually care about educating kids, they need to be in person. And better now when it's warm than later when it's cold. But this is just so disappointing, and I think such a terrible situation that we created for ourselves too. Thank you.
Are you -- can you guys see the screen? Okay. For those viewing at home, I apologize, because we continue to accept a public comment until 5. I don't believe that this document has been posted online, but it will be posted on our website tomorrow morning.
So I have a rather lengthy update, so, uh, I think, you know, perhaps I'll just ask those questions or comments a couple of times because there's a couple, um, let's see, I've got one, two, three. Got nine updates to give, so, uh, I apologize. Uh, I'll try to be as, as, um, clear as I can be. So the first one, I'm just going to read the closure letter that was sent and add a little bit of context, but just in case people didn't receive it. Dear ARPS community, as I've shared with the ARPS community previously, we are continually monitoring the COVID-19 case data in our area to measure it against the metrics for in-person learning agreed to by the school committee and the Amherst Palom Education Association. And there's a little asterisk in the, the metrics are listed below. While the data shared in the ARPS update last Friday met the metrics to continue in-person learning this week, it has shifted since that time. As a result, Phase One in-person school will continue for the rest of this week to promote consistency and provide time for staff, families and students to transition back to remote learning, which will start next Monday, October 26th, for at least two weeks, as per the agreement cited above. To be clear, there has not been a significant uptick in cases in Amherst, Levert, Palom or Schutzeberry, nor have we seen the UMass cases affect our numbers much locally. However, there's been a significant enough increase in cases in Hampden and Hampshire counties outside our four towns that has pushed the metric over the 28, 28 new cases per week level. Per the agreement, Phase One in-person school will start again on Monday, November 9th. If the health metrics are met at that time, the new dates for Phases Two and Three in-person learning are still being finalized since they're complicated by the break in holiday schedules released in the Friday update. Um, I think just to put a finer point on it, our active cases, which, you know, are cases where people are still in quarantine, is my understanding of that, um, are at the lowest level in the town of Amherst that they've been in weeks. Um, and that's a good thing. And, uh, UMass has had, I think, we're at five straight days with zero cases, which is great. Um, so I just, you know, for anyone who's nervous about, you know, we're at three more days of school before the closure starts. Um, at this point, um, the cases in Amherst are, and our four towns are very, very low. Um, so, you know, I felt comfortable, um, moving forward with continuing and ending the week and then, um, starting that closure period on Monday of next week. So that's obviously a big topic, so while I've got eight more, uh, I figure I'll pause here and see if there are questions or comments in the committee, if that's okay with the chairs.
Yes. And Mr. Demling and then Ms. Spitzer.
Yeah, I have a few questions, so, I mean, just first off, um, I mean, I am frustrated beyond words about the current situation, but given the fact that we have, uh, like you and the chair have said, a executive session posted for this Thursday to, um, I'm just reading the posting, "to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the APA." I'm not going to comment further, ask you to comment further about what you think of the autoclosure metric or possibility of change, but we obviously had a lot of public comment about it. Uh, the, the few questions I have are about, really about process and information. So in, in the, the statement today, there's this ellipsis, okay? We're often focused on an ellipsis, but it, it's key in this point because it says, the statement is one with the asterisk about what the metric is. So if the metrics fail to be met anytime, the districts will return to full remote for all students, dot, dot, dot. And then provided there are fewer than 28 new cases per week, and then goes on to explain. So those are two different sections from the memorandum, memorandum of agreement. But when you put them together, you draw the conclusion that, oh, even though we're only publishing the value, um, on Friday and making the closure decision then, actually, if, if the metric trips that 28 threshold, right, at any point, then, then that's it. Then in the following two weeks, schools are, are, are closed. Um, and that's not, that's not clear, um, I think, in my opinion, from previous communications. And so it, it just leads a couple of questions that I've asked similarly in the past one. Can, can we just post the memorandum of, we keep referring to like various components of it. Can we just post the MOA publicly? If it's publicly accessible and then parents have questions, they can trove through it themselves. And then the other question, and I don't know how practical this is, is can we publish what the daily value is? Now, I understand that would require more work. Um, and it may be a technical obstacle, but the fact is, is that there are now multiple alternate sources of this daily value. And because we don't produce an ARPS official daily value, people are turning to that. And, and this event has shone a light, but well, it's actually kind of relevant to track every day because that could, even if it happens on a Monday or Tuesday like it did, or Sunday like it did this time, that could mean the following two weeks, then parents have to plan and whatnot. So, um, I have a couple of other questions, but just those two, if you could address.
Sure, the MOA has been posted on our website for, since it was agreed to. It's if, uh, maybe it could post a different place, but it's under, uh, the Fall 2020 website, under staff. And since it's an agreement with the staff, um, it's at the very bottom, it's the last, I think, if I'm remembering correctly, it's at the bottom, Fall 2020, there's, you know, sort of a couple headings. One of them is staff and I believe the last one is the MOA. Um, so it is publicly accessible. Daily value, that's something we can definitely do, um, that's a good, good suggestion. Um, and, um, we will work on it. We frankly, in this situation, have a little bit of time to work on it. Um, and, uh, but it's, um, that's, that's a good suggestion that we can implement. Thank you.
Ms. Spitzer.
Thanks. Um, so I guess I just wanted to start off by first just recognizing how disappointed and upset parents are because, and I'm including in that kids, teachers, staff and, you know, myself included. You know, yesterday morning I was driving around town and it was so nice to see the buses out and the kids did masks waiting with their parents. Um, so, you know, this pandemic just keeps resulting in losses. And the loss today, you know, felt really, really real for our community. And at the same time, I recognize that it's completely in line with the agreement that we all voted on. Um, well, not all of us, but many of the members of this committee, you know, voted. So I'm not eager to revisit the agreement, but I think, and I'm assuming this is what's going to happen on Thursday, is that we really do need to come together to try to find a path forward that's less disruptive. Because it just, it, it feels really wrong to be moving, um, back and forth at such short notice. Um, one question I have is for the, um, for the two-week wait period, is that something that's going to start on the day we tripped the, you know, went over the metric? Or is that something that is always going to be like from the day when we closed our doors, we need to keep the doors closed for two weeks?
It'd be the latter. As how, you know, it was discussed in negotiations and I believe is the fair interpretation.
Thank you.
Ms. Hall.
Um, so just a, I guess a process question. So there's a meeting, a region meeting on Thursday and executive session. So it's possible then that coming out of that meeting, there might be a reason for a later joint meeting to revisit some things too for all three committees? Or at this point are any conversations about like the health metrics and anything? Those are exclusively like the region and executive session.
Dr. Morris?
So the region is the negotiating agent for all three committees by policy. Um, and so, um, much like anyone else, I think if there's feedback that any committee member would want to give to the region or to the chair of the region, or, um, they could do that, but, um, I, I don't want to make a decision, but I think because this is related, potentially related to negotiations, the region would be the group that would be a negoti-, it feels awkward to say. I mean, I have no interest in cutting anyone out of the dialogue, Sarah, I hope you know that.
Um, yeah, and I'm not trying to make anything awkward. I'm just purely because I don't have experience with this, wanting to understand the process. When there's an MOA in place, anything opening back up, what happens then? But that's enough of an answer, oh, sorry, but you're going to talk.
Oh, no, I was just going to say, I mean, you know, I think I would encourage members who are not part of the region, if they have feedback, to actually share them, you know, um, with the chair of the region. Because I think that, it's not that, I think that would be the, the process-wise, the way that that could be communicated effectively.
Okay, all right, thank you. Mr. Manino.
I'm not sure how I share my position. Do I do it now? Do I do it later? I mean, uh, how do I share my concerns?
Um, I see several, several ways to respond. I would say later, um, given that it's, um, part of a, the, if it's, um, related to the topic of the executive session, then later through, um, uh, email is, is appropriate. Um, Dr. Morris, is that, but?
Yeah, so I think this is a, I think I'd rather just be transparent and explicit about it. I think this is a fine line because if there's frustrations about something that was negotiated or an interest in, in going back to those negotiations, we don't do that in public meetings. That's why there's executive sessions. Um, I think if it's frustration that students, about the letter I read and that students aren't, won't be in school for two weeks, that's not related to an MOA. I mean, it's indirectly related to an MOA, but I mean, certainly anyone like Ms. Spitzer did can express sadness, uh, and I think it will in a second, uh, about the impact it has on kids and families. And, and there's no, there's nothing barring you from sharing any of that. But I think if, if it's about the particulars of an MOA or particulars of a negotiation, either past, present or future, I would strongly urge you to not share those publicly.
Well, I'll express my position of sadness regarding the students being cut out from classes. Uh, it was abrupt. I know it's the subject of a previous agreement, uh, but there's got to be a way around this somehow. And I'll address later in private with the chair of the region.
Um, I, I see your hand up, Mr. Demling, but I, I would also like to, and before, um, circling back to you, just express my, um, extreme sadness. I mean, listening to, reading the letter and listening to the public comment this evening as well as the reading the emails, it just really, I don't have a kindergarten or a first grader, but the, hearing the pain and the frustration and the anguish in, in our families is, is really challenging. And I, and I do hope, share, um, Ms. Spitzer's hope that we can, um, help the situation and so that we're meeting the needs of our families and our students, um, especially our students, um, better. I think also sort of to talk indirectly about the MOA, I think, you know, as we focus on the, you know, within the MOA or any agreement, sort of the implementation is sometimes where the challenge is even after, you know, even if everybody, you know, in, in, no matter what it is, and I think one of the things that we're learning is that, you know, despite all of our efforts, there's a, there's still a lot of question and a lot of confusion and, um, and uncertainty regarding, you know, just like, how do we implement this and what does it mean? And I think that's also hard, you know, contributing to the pain and the frustration that the community is feeling because it's really hard to understand. And, you know, we've even had questions, like just hearing our own process questions. So I think we have significant opportunity to, to keep working on that together with the union. Um, Mr. Demling?
Yeah, I just wanted to, um, point out that I don't think we've completely figured out here exactly what the proper way is to communicate and, and opine on these things as they move through the various stages. So for example, here's what I mean, you know, back in August, we had multiple meetings in a row where we all talked openly and had good discussions about metrics. and had good discussions about metrics, right? And Dr. Morris had a couple of presentations, and he gave the list of evidence. We had back and forth, and we said, okay, there's this value. So the public got a chance to hear us on that. Once that component became part of an agreement that was under negotiation, we stopped talking about it in public, which was appropriate, for at least for the region, because it's the region that was in executive session. Now that that agreement is done, it's a little ambiguous as to what's appropriate to say publicly. I mean, if you draw it to its logical conclusion, it sounds a little absurd to say, well, it's in the MOA, therefore, the public will never again get to hear a public opinion or discussion among the school committee about what we think of metrics, which, given their import, seems a little odd. And I think, I think it gets even a little more odd for members here that aren't members of the region. Now, when Mr. Manino said that, it raised for me that like, okay, yes, by policy, the region negotiates for the three districts, but Mr. Manino and Ms. Hall aren't members of the, of the region, and, you know, they're not, therefore, they won't be in that executive session. And so, you know, I think we should be a little cautious about saying, oh, it's somehow related to the agreement, therefore, we can't speak about it. I think, I think we're still figuring this out. And I think we need to be mindful of that, especially when we are obviously getting a lot of public input about what we think of this.
Dr. Morris, and then Mr. Manino, I saw your hand also, but Dr. Morris. And you're muted.
Sorry. Thing without, had happened a couple of times. Just to clarify my comments from before, I don't, I hear where Mr. Demling is coming from, and I don't want to do the back and forth. I think what I wish I had said is, since there's a currently posted meeting to talk about this and in the executive session, given that meeting, I think that was what was causing me pause and perhaps giving, you know, the advice I gave was framed that there, this is not a topic that seems like the committee won't have an opportunity, at least to discuss next steps, that it would like to pursue with it. And that, I think that was causing me pause about having a more open conversation, because it's already on an agenda. You're right about the region and members of the Pelham School Committee who are not on the region. It's a super awkward system. I'll get into more three districts don't make sense all the time stuff in a little bit on a financial level. So we can riff on that a little bit later, actually, two different riffs on that, just in my superintendent update. So, but I think I just wanted to clarify where my, my comment and my advice was coming from. It really was framed that there is an executive session in a posted meeting 48 hours from, actually, almost exactly 48 hours from now. So I think that that was really where I was coming from.
Mr. Manino, did you have a comment?
My only concern is the low bar is an important part of the memo of understanding. It's probably the most important part. And I don't think there's going to be an opportunity for me to hear everybody's on the committee's viewpoint, if the current understanding is, you can't talk about something that's part of the memo of understanding. It sort of feels like I'm being shut out of the conversation. I know that's not intentional, but basically, I'm an observer, not a participant. I'm a member of this Pelham School Committee, and it affects the kids in my school, but I can't talk about it. I feel disenfranchised. But, you know, I know that's not the intent, but I do feel disenfranchised. That's it.
Dr. Morris?
Just very briefly, I think if you're in a Pelham School Committee meeting, you might feel more enfranchised. But right now, this is a joint meeting with one of the committees being the negotiating body. And so there may be an opportunity for you to feel more unable to have that conversation when it's not a meeting with the negotiating body seated. And I, you know, you'll hear later in this update, I'm going to be asking for a Pelham specific meeting. It's not necessarily planned on that topic, Mr. Manino, but we'll get to it in a little bit.
Ms. Kenny.
Oh, hmm, maybe this is part of it. So I'll ask my question, and if we can't talk about it, you can tell me we can't talk about it, how's that? So there's the, oh my gosh, I'm not going to get this right, J M L S C, right? And they are an advising body that comes into play when these metrics get tricked, right? Can you talk to us at all about how that conversation went? Is that, is that closure?
I don't know, but I think I can give enough without, you know, we had a productive, we met yesterday afternoon, we had a productive conversation about the metrics, about next steps. I think it was a good, it was making sure that we're communicating with our bargaining unit. I don't know, I felt like it was a productive meeting, to be able to talk about what the metrics were and what next steps were, that there wasn't, I shared no concerns about students finishing the week, so we were able to have that conversation. You know, I don't know, to me, it felt like a productive collaborative conversation about the, you know, how we were going to apply that aspect of the contract. So, you know, we had met the Friday before, because we meet on a weekly basis as per the MOA, but in this instance, it felt right to meet more quickly. And again, I felt like it was a productive conversation.
Seeing, I'm not seeing any other comments right now, so like, back over to you, Dr. Morris? And you're muted again?
Usually my max is two in a meeting, so I'm at three now. I don't know if that, got a little more talking that I have to do. So in all seriousness, I do want to publicly thank the staff members for making the first four days of schooling so powerful for students. I know this is sort of perhaps awkward to talk about, given the first update I just gave, but it's no less important to note that it's been, it's been joyous. Someone asked me how the first two days were. Thursday was my favorite workday in many, many months, probably more than that, just seeing how wonderfully supportive our staff were and welcomed students to the building. I was able to start the day at Crocker Farm and see our preschoolers, our youngest students walk in, and I wasn't the only person cheering up, just seeing, you know, three and four year olds come into the building and be welcomed by the coordinator, by teachers, par educators, and others. I then was able to go over to the high school, where students from the middle school and high school were able to attend. One of the things I heard were there were students who were choosing not to access distance learning, who people were so happy to see, because they weren't showing up on screens, if they were, their cameras were off, and they wanted to be in school. And even for, you know, some perceptions of high school students and not feeling like it's cool or whatever, it was, and, you know, it was, it was really neat. And then was able to see the drop off at Fort River. And that was also equally wonderful and really well managed for the number of cars that came in, which is a much higher than our usual number. I was able to make it all the schools throughout the day, including Pelham, which was easy with two classes. It was pretty, pretty nice to be able to walk through. One was outside and one was inside. But, you know, the general feedback I got from students and families was that it was outstanding, and from staff members too, who, you know, I think anytime in a new situation doesn't feel quite the same as normal school, and yet there were definite benefits. I had an early childhood educator tell me, you know, at first, I was thinking it was going to be horrible that students were in desks and not tables. And then by the third day, she said, you know what, I kind of like this, right? She thought from a chattering point of view, it was contributing to more useful dialogue, more academic dialogue, less social dialogue. So I really want to publicly thank the educators, the bus drivers, the van drivers, the monitors, the custodians. You know, one of the things that I also heard was how it felt to one staff member who shared with me, all this is just me walking around the buildings, not asking questions, just thanking people. They said, every time I open the door, I feel like there's a custodian cleaning off the door handle, you know, that our full staff was out in force to support students. I, you know, I saw arrival at multiple schools and dismissal, and, you know, everybody's outside, making sure from a safety point of view, both, you know, distancing safety, but also just literal buses and vans and cars, and how do we do this? You know, many of our schools reorganize themselves, you know, for instance, Crocker Farm, the buses are now coming down on the Shea Street entrance, where the cars are going, you know, the front. At the high school, there's multiple entrances for the different programs to promote, you know, safety, not necessarily just COVID safety, but again, just everyone's feeling of safety and security for where they're going in the building. You know, it was just, it was fabulous. And so I just want to thank everybody for their work and making such a difference. I know it's more short-lived, at least in terms of consecutive days than we hoped, but it's no less important in terms of the student and family experience that we had. And there was just a lot of smiles, right? And I know that's like a very rudimentary way to assess how things are going, but I'd walk in rooms and students and staff were all doing school, doing work, and having a fabulous time doing it. And, you know, I was in one class, and it was a virtual PE lesson, or virtual, it was a virtual specials lesson at the elementary level, and the teacher then brought them outside, and they were able to knack things and just really creative ways to do that. And it was just wonderful, the class sizes are small, and that also contributed to everyone feeling much more comfortable. So it was a really successful first few days of school, and I know it will be for the rest of the week. I was able to attend to three of the meetings that we had with in-person staff this afternoon. The idea was that we were originally going to share the letter this morning, but we thought it was the respectful thing to be able to talk to in-person staff before the letter went out, and let them have a reaction. We didn't want to send it, because there was a strong reaction from any in-person staff. We didn't want to do that while they had kids in the building. We felt like that was not actually fair to staff to do that. So, you know, some really good dialogue and conversations after school, is over at the high school with the kind of the intensive needs program. We did a virtual one for the preschool, and then in-person over at Fort River this afternoon. So, you know, it's bittersweet for sure to talk about at this moment in time, but it doesn't mean that the staff who were doing really important work shouldn't be commended and acknowledged in a public space. So I'll pause and see if there are questions for me about the start of in-person before I go through my many other updates.
Mr. Demling?
So when I think about the safe reopening plan, I've kind of coalesced on like four pillars. There's this community spread, and we just talked about how we define that, so I won't belabor that. But then there's masks, distancing, and air exchange. And I know we've talked ad nauseam about that over the course of the summer, but now that we're into it, we've had, I know it's only been four days, but before this becomes a faded memory, can you talk a little bit about how that, how that's been going in terms of mask compliance, distancing, and the air exchange? Has, has things met our expectations? Do we need to make adjustments going forward?
Yeah. So my perception is that we have met our expectations. The feedback I received from staff is they felt more comfortable being in than they anticipated. That's not hard data, but that's anecdotal data. And, you know, it's funny, I use the word smiles. I mean, the mask compliance was really good, was really strong from students. Teachers found creative ways for students to be outside a lot. And when you see the smiles, you'd see the eye, right? You know, you'd see that, you can still see a smile even with a mask on, just because you see it in the face, and, and that's what we saw a lot of. So I do feel like from a safety perspective, it felt really good. I will say that, you know, we, I've gotten some, perhaps not always the most positive feedback about phasing. It felt like 100% the right decision in terms of drop off, pickup, the number of people in the building, felt like the right grain size. You know, one of my principals said today, I felt like I was the best principal in the world, because there was the right number of kids. If there was ever a question, the counselors, if a student was struggling with something, there was so much ability to be present very quickly and problem solve, that would have been much more challenging if half the school was there, for instance, to start. So, you know, were there small things that required problem solving? Absolutely. Were they able to be problem solved almost immediately? You know, the feedback I received was yes, that they really were. And so, you know, obviously, this is a big detour that we're on right now, but it did feel like we were on the right pace. Like, we'd gotten through the first couple of days, we were now envisioning phase two, and how to get second and third graders in. You know, their locations were all sorted out, and the staffing piece, we were wrapped up with. So it really felt like we could problem solve, because the scale was the right scale to start with. And so in terms of the planning, it felt really good. You know, people had PPE, they had what they needed to do that, they knew where to go to communicate if something was out, like someone said, oh, you know, we're out of hand sanitizer today, and we knew where the hand sanitizer was from the fire department, we can't bring barrels of hand sanitizer over and store them all together, so there's fire code around that. But, you know, we had these systems that we were able to develop, where people were able to problem solve really quickly. And it, right, Friday wasn't a day that people, kids were able to be outside as much as they typically would. But again, the systems and structures really worked well. I want to thank the bus drivers and van drivers for their work, because we did transport a fair number of students, and there was work about literally like assigned seating and sign-ins, so you knew exactly where they're. So in a worst-case scenario, the contract tracing was all there, you didn't have to go and ask people. You knew who was seated where on a bus, on a van, in a classroom. In the classroom, people have assigned seats, so a student says, I'm 3G, right? So again, from all those planning for worst-case scenarios, people did an incredible job with that. Sorry, I could go on forever on this topic, because I feel really passionately about the job our team did, the custodial team, the administrative team, teachers, par educators. But it felt like it worked well, it felt like there was space for students. When I walked in rooms, there was never a place where I, nor a staff member said, feels kind of too crowded in here. It was quite the opposite, there was plenty of space for student movement, staff movement. And, you know, I'm sad that we're going to have to take a pause from that, because it felt like, you know, quote unquote, it worked.
I think in the interest of time, we'll just, we'll keep going. If you can hold your comment, Mr. Demling, till later, that'd be great.
Yep. One of the things on that topic, actually, I'll hold that part, I'll do it a little bit later. So, let's see, last week, Tuesday, I was asked to be on RIAC again, the Racial Imbalance Advisory Council for the Board of Elementary and Secondary Education. We had our first meeting, which was very productive. I was asked to facilitate a conversation about best practices post-COVID for recruitment and retention of educators of color. A lot of us are very concerned about the fiscal situation, and especially districts like ours that have significantly diversified our faculty. You know, in the last five years, we have 50%, if you look at the DSE data, we have more than 50% more staff of color than we had. And so a lot of us are concerned about that, a lot of us are concerned about what that looks like over time in terms of retention. So we had some really good dialogue, there's some new members, which is fantastic, and, you know, I'll just continue to update you as we meet. But the theme for this year is, the area of focus, I should say, is around recruitment and retention of educators of color, so certainly something that we've talked about in this, on these committees many times. And I just feel fortunate that I'm able to have the dialogue with educators and school committee members from across the state there. There was a school committee member from Springfield, who is, we call each other RIAC West, because we're the only two. But, you know, the virtual context actually makes it easier to participate in statewide groups like this. So I was looking for silver linings, and I'm able to be much more present than I would be if I was driving to Worcester or Boston for meetings. Today, we had a pickup, and yet another pickup for hotspots, Chromebooks, and iPads. So in terms of last time, or one of the times previous we spoke, we talked about hotspots, we needed to come, some more, so we, those have come in and been distributed to families who indicated that they were in need of internet. So thank you to Jerry Champagne for that, that work. The next thing I'd like to share is an enrollment update. So I know at the last meeting, I mentioned the high school enrollment numbers being lower, and then I'm going to drill down, even though it's a joint meeting to Pelham, because there's a particularly acute issue that I want to talk about, that's specific to Pelham. So let me share my screen. There it is. There we go. So imagine you can all see that, I'll try to make it a little bit larger. That's probably a little bit, hopefully, a little bit better. So what you can see is at the high school, I'll just say it out loud, for people looking, watching this on their phone, we went from 920 students, our official October 2019 numbers, at this point, we're down to 883. This is not official, because it has to get better, there's a whole process by the state, but this is what we had. So that's a pretty significant drop of students, 37 students. At the middle school, we stayed roughly flat. At Crocker Farm, we are down about 26 students. At Fort River, we stayed flat. Pelham, we're down, you know, 17, 18 students. And at Pelham, we're down 20 students. And the reason I point out Pelham is, as a percentage of the school, that is a huge drop in the enrollment of Pelham. So again, I'm not trying to pick on Pelham, it's just because it's a percentage, did a little more research on Pelham's. I think it's worth noting, this is a major concern for the FY22 budget. So when they do, so for next year's budget, for people who don't speak in our bizarre code, so for those budgets, our Chapter 70 money is based on enrollment, and with a drop of 111 students, from last year to this year, that is going to be a major issue that I have deep concerns about affecting the FY22 budget. There's nothing to be done about it, right? They'll pull our October 1 data, which is going to be give or take what's on the sheet. Again, it needs to be verified and sometimes there's questions about that. But it is concerning. It is a trend that we have seen or we are seeing in other districts. We're not unique in that regard. But it's no less concerned, no less concerning than because it is happening elsewhere. It still is going to affect us. So, you know, it's also just a marker, you know, if one student left or if I was one off to talk about 20, less than 2,400 students in our district. It's, you know, it does feel like some theoretical line is being crossed about the size of our district. This is significantly smaller than we've been in the past. This doesn't include the preschool at Crocker Farm. But I want to note, based on our decision last year because of COVID, we have very few students enrolled in the preschool at Crocker Farm, which is a whole nother conversation for a different day. But we're seeing a rapid decline and this is going to have financial ramifications for us in the next fiscal year. We are starting to do research on where these students have gone, right? There is this factor that we're seeing lots of places of kindergartners just choosing not to enroll because the idea of a virtual enrollment and for students that young, for some families doesn't, isn't appealing to them. But it does seem like the number of homeschool families has doubled-ish. We'll have real clear numbers on that next week. And private schools, we have a lot, a lot of students who left the district to go to private schools this year. So, you know, when that data, basically the state works with us to compile that data. And by winter, we have the school attending report. And we'll be able to share that more formally at that time because the state plays a median role in that data and make sure it's clean between private schools, public schools. But it is again, a major source of concern. Before I go specific into Pelham, want to just give any committee members who have any comments or questions about this set of data, opportunity to ask them. And then, and then we'll talk Pelham.
Ms. Lloyd.
I'm wondering if there's a thing that where all the school committee can come together in Massachusetts and just try to petition to get our numbers for chapter 70 based on the year before the pandemic. I don't know if that would ever fly, but it would make sense for all of us not to be penalized for COVID-19.
Dr. Morris.
Yeah, I believe Senator Comerford has discussed this matter. So by recommendation, either individually or a committee, as if that's something the committee wants to take up. Either again, either individually or as groups. I know that she has many districts in her area that are facing the same challenge. And I know she's spoken about this pretty openly about her concerns, certainly Rep. Dome and Representative Blay. I'm not dismissing them. I know I've heard it directly from Senator Comerford. So that's the only reason I mentioned her. But I do think talking about legislators sooner as opposed to later, if the committee is interested, would be my recommendation.
Thank you.
Mr. Demlin.
Do you, do you think these enrollment numbers are a result of the extent to which we've been able to offer in-person learning? Think they're affected by that?
Yes, I do. I, I can't explain the private school numbers except for that. And the fact that right now it doesn't appear that our charter school numbers, you know, the two charter schools that have the most students attending them are in virtual. And so that number hasn't bumped, whereas the private school number has. You know, that leads me to that hypothesis. Again, you know, anecdotally, people have told me that, right? As they've left. That's, that's all anecdote, but I think the data points in that direction. Yes.
Any other questions then for Dr. Morris? Ms. Seager and then Ms. Spitzer.
Year to year, I imagine the numbers fluctuate. How much do they usually fluctuate with students coming in and students leaving?
Significantly less than this. This and to have 100, over 100 students less is, that is a marker of something different happening. And, you know, what you can see is that it can't be all kindergarten because, you know, you look at the high school, right? That's significantly down. The middle school, we did expect it to be higher than that. If you remember, we had a big sixth grade that graduated last year coming up to the middle school. And it certainly doesn't explain some of, some of the elementaries, some which stayed more constant and some that had pretty significant drops. And that you'll get a sneak peek at Pelham data just for fun because you're not a Pelham member, but in a second, I think that'll actually tell sort of an interesting story. This is why I chose to bring it, even though it's a joint meeting.
Ms. Spitzer.
I had a similar question about how this, you know, looking at just year to year is doesn't show a trend. So it would just be interesting to see if we could look at this. And I know it's in our budget documents. So I did, I guess I, it's on me to kind of go back and look at our budget documents, but it, it's clearly concerning. And I'm glad that you mentioned that you're going to be doing some more follow-up potentially with the families. So there are families who maybe were never in our district, like the kindergartners who stayed home. And so reaching out to those folks would be difficult. But if there are families who were in our district and are no longer in our district, is there any reason we can't send them, you know, do some sort of outreach to find out what was driving the decision? Because I remember a long time ago, we did that. It was right when I started, there were results from folks who had opted not to enroll in our public schools. And it was like a lot of families who had chosen private schools and it was a survey. So I'm just wondering if there's any capacity. And I, there are so many other things to prioritize right now that I don't want to add. Just because it had been done in the past, it might be worth revisiting and looking at if there are changes in the, in what responses were then and what the responses are now. Cause I think that would be really important to see. Cause I know just anecdotally, like you said, that the homeschooling piece is interesting because I think it's hard to say, are people choosing, assuming if you're choosing homeschooling, you still, it's, it's not related to this question of being virtual because you're still not in person if you're doing a homeschooling situation, unlike the choice to go into a private school. So I'd be curious about why are people choosing the homeschool option over the virtual learning option? Because maybe there's something we could learn to improve our virtual learning or just respond to that need.
Yeah, this is where it gets really complicated. So I think it's worth me responding to that just for a minute. I agree about getting more data and we plan to do that. So when we think about homeschooling, there's a number of institutions that have popped up, Morse Hill being the most prominent in our area that are offering essentially private school, but they're calling it homeschool. And I won't get into, Morse Hill can respond to why they're calling it that instead of calling it a school. I think I know the answer, but I'm, I don't work there. So, you know, our homeschool numbers aren't necessarily all the traditional homeschool numbers. Sometimes people have found other quasi-in-person schools to to use to, as the primary source of schooling for their child. So that's where it gets, the data itself gets really murky because we do have a number of students that are listed as homeschool, but they're it's not homeschool, like they're not actually staying home. Right? They're, they're going other places. I think the other thing is that homeschooling as an option feels different this time around because, and I'm not picking on Morse Hill, by the way. There are other institutions that are doing that as well. It's just, that's the newest one that's popped up. And I've noticed that we do have some students who are formerly in the district, all three districts, actually. I don't know about this. Yeah, all three districts, I believe, who are attending that. I think the other thing is that, you know, when the option is, we have people who are concerned about, they don't want their kids on screens. And if that's the virtual option that's offered, they're making other choices about what they want to do with their children. You know, I'm aware that people have hired in-person teachers as a third variable to work with small groups of students who, because they want an in-person experience. And so yes, it's listed as homeschool, but it's actually not what you think of as traditional homeschooling. It's in-person schooling with people with resources who are paying for someone to come into one person's home and three or four kids are sharing the cost, right? So the data is really murky that way. It's hard to really disentangle all those thesis. We're going to try our best to do that. But I use those examples to suggest that sort of the monoliths of categories that we have don't really apply to the current situation very neatly. Does that make sense? To provide just context, again, not to disagree with the larger point you're making.
No, I think that's really important. And I think being public about the financial consequences for our community about these personal choices is worth noting, right? So I think, not that everybody needs to carry around with them, you know, the guilt of funding of our public schools, but I think it's just we, all of these choices have consequences and sometimes they're not well understood even by folks on this committee. So I think it's important to, to keep mentioning that.
Yep, I agree.
I have one question and forgive me if you've already answered this and I missed it. So I apologize. In, in the outreach amongst the families that, that have left, that you've done, have, have you asked the question about whether their, their decision was intended to be a temporary decision or a more permanent decision? Because, and I ask, particularly in the high school where we see a very large drop, there's, you, you mentioned, you mentioned Morse Hill as an option, but there's, when you get to the high school level, there's even more options. If you're, you know, particularly for the families of means, you know, to look even beyond our region for, for students and you know, families might be thinking of this as, as a temporary, you know, one semester or one year kind of sort of thing. And so I'm just curious as whether we, we've asked that question or plan to ask that question.
We do plan to. I mean, the outreach we've done so far is very much at the individual level. Now that we have more data, we plan to do a much broader outreach to that. And I think you're right that that's a question that needs to be asked. You know, and I, I'm going to be a little dour. I think I know the meaning of that word. Like I just have a lot of not so great information to share tonight. So I'm not trying to be dramatic about it, but you know, when we look at some of the schools and school sizes, you know, for many, many years, we tried to keep the high school, you mentioned it at around 1,000 because we felt like that was the right size to be able to maintain the type of comprehensive high school we want. And I do have concerns about 883 and, and being able to finance, you know, the comprehensive level of programs. I'm not getting ahead of myself, but that's why I'm bringing it to the committee and the public's attention early is it's very real. The consequences, as people noted, are very real to this. And I don't want to get to spring or winter and people say, where did this come from that we have a fiscal problem? Separate from the COVID stuff. I mean, some of it obviously is going to be the COVID stuff and that's going to be its own budget challenge for all three committees this spring. But some of it's going to be with our, with our current enrollment. That's going to be a, a real challenge. And you know, our class size at the high school are by and large, on average, really, really wonderful right now. And that's a great thing. I'm, I'm never going to speak about that being a bad thing. The same time, you know, when we talk about fiscal feasibility long-term, I do have concerns about these numbers and we'll talk about Pelham more acutely in a second. So, you know, I'm not trying to alarm anyone, but I also feel like I'm not doing my job if I don't communicate raw data that, that has real implications for us in the future.
Mr. Demlin.
So Dr. Morris, I appreciate your moderation, but I mean, I, I will, I think we should try to alarm people because I think this is alarming. You know, because, because we are 883 at the high school is my opinion, in danger of triggering a death spiral. And by that I mean decreased enrollment leads to decreased funding, which means we need to decrease our services, which means people are less likely to want to go to the high school because of other options, which leads to decreased enrollment, et cetera, et cetera. And then, you know, when you get the money back, you can't just, you can't just throw it back on the fire. You know, you have those students that are gone and you have a new reality. And I mean, I asked you the question before, do you think this is related to our in-person? I'll admit that was a bit facetious. I mean, you know, I, you talked about those other kind of options of non-traditional homeschooling. We haven't mentioned the word pods. And I mean, the, the reality is that if you have means right now, you can buy in-person learning. And, and we're not offering it. And, and, and that's, that's a big driver here. And I don't say that because I've spoken to every one of these, you know, data points. But, but, but we know this is the case and, and we're in real danger in terms of the future of public schools. That if, that if we don't do something strongly and soon, that our public schools could look a lot different for the coming generations. And, you know, I, I, I hesitate to say that in those terms and be that dramatic, but I think the economic impact from a pandemic and what is happening here and what we've been able to do so far with maximizing in-person learning this year, which is not a lot, is meets that threshold. So I just wanted to add that comment. Thank you.
So that segues to Pelham, if it's okay, if I could drill in on that. And I know it's a joint meeting, but I actually felt like this was important enough. I didn't want to wait for a Pelham specific meeting. And it was related to this topic. I will be a little more dramatic talking about my concerns about Pelham. And so, you know, I did think a lot about whether to share this at a joint meeting, but I feel like, you know, we're, we're in a supervisory union with AMERST and these students go to the region. So, you know, I felt like I should share it. Let me see if I can change the screen to Pelham. Can people see that now for Pelham?
Yes.
Okay. So here's the enrollment and for Pelham folks, they see this or some version of this at, at many of their meetings in terms of their enrollments. And, and one thing to note is that kindergarten's low, but it's not that low, 15, you know, so we're not seeing just that Pelham is low, but you could see that across the grade level bands, we've seen a loss of enrollment. Really across the board here. And at 37 choice students, that's the lowest. I was going to go back today and then I, things happened and I didn't get around to it. That's the lowest and I can remember in many, many years in Pelham. I, you know, I've been in this district, you know, only one of these three districts for 20 years. That's as, as about as low as, as it may have been in, in, in that generation. And it's a huge cause of concern. I'm just going to be really blunt about it. This is not sustainable to have 105 students in Pelham, K to six and 37 of them be choice. It's not something that is fiscally sustainable. And I'm not talking five years down the road. I'm not talking 10 years down the road. I'm talking much more narrowly and acutely than that. And so we do need to have a Pelham meeting to talk about this. I am deeply, deeply concerned about the finances of Pelham. You know, even just like what we've had to spend this year, there's no huge CARES Act fund for Pelham, the same way there has been for some of our other communities in AMERST, you know, in particular, but the region itself, even for the school-based CARES Act. So, you know, I know Principal Whiting Jones has done a great job of advertising the school. We have had some new choice kids join. It's not that there hasn't been effort. So there's been rejection. She's contacted many families. We had some new, new students start right before the school year in grade one to get our numbers to 10. But I think to the question asked earlier about whether the duration question, it's really important here and I, because it's a joint meeting, I probably won't go into more detail. But those of you who have been in Pelham a while, if you look at that number of 37 and 105, I think you all know that that's not what we're accustomed to seeing and that it's frankly not sustainable. And I have current concern about the current fiscal year with those numbers. And I have a lot of concerns about the next fiscal year with those numbers. So to Mr. Demlin's point about before about being, me being moderated, I'll be less moderated about Pelham because my concerns are much more imminent and acute about how that school is funded and financed and moves forward in the ways that we wanted to.
Mr. Manino.
At that Pelham only meeting, could you give a comparison for all these three columns last year and this year?
Absolutely.
And Ms. Barlow and then Ms. Hall.
Um, does it matter if some of these families do, it is just a temporary leave from Pelham, they come back? Or does it not impact, would it impact the following year's budget if those, some of those families did come back?
Right. So it's an October 1 count every year that affects the next fiscal year. So for this fiscal year, what's done is done, so to speak. For the next fiscal year, right, that'll affect the next fiscal year. So if students return for the fall of 22, excuse me, in the fall of 21, it would affect the fiscal year that follows that. That's the, the trend always is that it can't, it can't affect the current fiscal year because the fiscal year already started. So we wouldn't know it till October. So that's how the formula is, is it uses the, the current fiscal year. Current fiscal year's October 1 enrollments affects the following year's state funding. Yeah. Sorry, I wasn't clear about that.
And Ms. Hall, did you have your hand raised before?
I did. Yeah. Yeah. I mean, I, I have
I did. Yeah, I mean, I have one million questions, and I will wait for Pelham-only meeting. I guess I would just say I would like to, and I know we have agenda planning later, but I think it's important to do that sooner rather than later. It's going to be, and it's going to be more than just one Pelham-only meeting to figure some of this stuff out. So, yeah, I would say, don't moderate yourself, because this is, there's nothing moderate about this.
Ms. Stanser.
Is there any way to know how much the school choice was affected by the fact that we can no longer guarantee the Pelham students going up into the middle school and high school?
There's no way to know, but I think the, anecdotally, and my hypothesis is that was a pretty low factor this year. I think collectively, the world is thinking less into the future, far distance, and much more living in the here and now. So I think, you know, I didn't hear much of that, which I heard last year. This year was not related to that.
Okay. Ms. Barlow? Oh, sorry. We talked about this in the region. When you click on raise hand, please just remember to take your hand down. Ms. Seeger.
So what I'm curious about, I'm familiar with school choice, but generally, my understanding is what generally happens is that money for school choice comes into the district the year that the students are there, and is generally spent the following year. So this means that Pelham will have less money the following year. What I'm curious about, just a more clarifying question, is how do school choice numbers affect Chapter 70, if at all?
So, two parts to that. So, and I don't want to do the history of Pelham's school choice, because I don't think that will be interesting to most people here. But I think the thing to note about Pelham is, for many years, Pelham was spending, I think it is relevant to all districts, was spending more of its school choice revenue than it was bringing in. In other words, it built up a fairly large balance. I think this is relevant, because we increased our school choice use in all districts, so this applies to all. And so if we, this year, bring in less revenue, and this would be significantly less, we're going to end up, we budgeted for using more than we spent, which is going to make an operational deficit for next year. Because, you know, essentially, the budget was built with income that it may not come. So that's going to be its own problem in Pelham. In Amherst, it works much more how you described, it affects the next year's budget. But in Pelham, it essentially functions bluntly as part of the operating budget, because it's such a large percentage of the Pelham student population and Pelham budget. So in terms of affecting Chapter 70, I don't believe it has much of an impact at all on that particular component, but that's a question I can have Doug come back and respond to. Chapter 70, I'm just writing it down, and I will loop back to you all with the answer.
Did you have another question, Ms. Seeger? Okay, since there's a Pelham-only committee meeting coming up, if folks are okay to move on to the next.
Yep. And now I'm going to make one-third of the people happy, and the other two-thirds unhappy, or I guess some people are going to be splitting their thoughts. So the governor put out the rest of the fiscal year 21 budget. So in other words, as you might remember, the governor did not file a budget that was for the full fiscal year, FY21, so the updated budget to get through the rest of the year was posted. I'll start with a positive note, since I don't have that much in my update, although there's some good stuff coming soon, is Amherst ended up a bit to the good from what was budgeted for, for the Amherst Public Schools. However, the region is down $95,000 from what was budgeted for, you know, from our initial estimates from the state. And Pelham is down $11,000, which is a lot of money for Pelham. And I know some people might say those numbers for Amherst and Region 11 is, you know, is easily manageable. For Pelham, that's less manageable. At those respective committee meetings, we'll go into the details, but I did want to share publicly that in terms of the governor's budget, it would have an impact on the current fiscal year, because this is, this is not projections for next year, it's to finish off FY21. So it is a concern for the region, and it is a concern for, and I don't want to minimize $95,000, that's a lot of money in any district, including the region. So just something to be aware of, that our current fiscal year's budget in two of the three districts is at least potentially taking a turn for the worse. And so, again, in respective districts, I'll update you, because that's public information in terms of the cherry sheets, I thought I would share that with you and the public now. And why don't I pause if there are questions, because I've got a couple other items, and I will end on a positive note, I promise.
Ms. Seeger.
So I'm sort of new to this area of how, how does it work with the governor's budget? And are they looking at every school district and what this specific has proposed? Or does some of that thing happening results in different districts ending up in different places?
No, so what they're doing is they're, typically, the governor's budget comes out in a typical, right, well, it did come out last January and late January, and then it goes to the legislature, and they have conversation, and they vote a budget that lasts for the next fiscal year. Since the process was certainly not linear last year, and how things played out, we sort of made assumptions based on what the state had. But now it includes charter, now it includes charter reimbursement, it includes choice, includes a number of other factors in it. So when we're looking forward from what was anticipated for state aid, and now what it looks like at least potentially we would receive, there's a delta in all three districts. You know, this is, again, I foreshadowed this earlier of the kind of farce of the three districts sometimes for me and Doug, is that, you know, if we could average all of them together, we'd be fine. But that's not the way our districts work. We have, you know, positive variance in the Amherst Public Schools, and negative variance in the other two, based on what was anticipated. So, you know, when we do first quarter budget, which I think is two weeks from now, Doug can get into the weeds on all this stuff. I gave him the night off, given, you know, that we had, well, not a long agenda, but a media agenda. But he can get into the weeds much more on all the implications and the reasons, but it's just a cause of concern that we have essentially, you know, three digits number, or 100Ks, we would say, three digits down there, and $11,000 in Pelham from what was budgeted. All right. Oh, I'm sorry, there is another question.
Mr. Demling.
Yeah, sorry. There was an update, and the commissioner's update this week, that if you have a power outage day, and we did experience power recently, as to whether they could be treated as no days or not, and he got into some options there, and locals could decide. Could you get into that a little bit?
Why don't I come back to that next time? Just because I feel like my update is, it's quite lengthy tonight, so hopefully we'll have no storms next two weeks, and we can come back to that and talk about it more fully, if that's okay with the committee.
Yep.
So, couple others, distance learning survey, thank you for those of you who filled it out. We've got hundreds of parent guardian responses, hundreds of student responses. Emily's going to do a great job encouraging her colleagues to, at the high school, to fill out the survey. Thank you, Emily, and then hundreds of staff responses. So we appreciate that. We'll send a reminder out on Thursday, because the survey's due Friday, and we'll bring that back. Thankfully, Obed is going to do some analysis on that. We will also, in the next week, be sending out a well-being survey. Obed has identified a survey, I think it's from Pennsylvania or Ohio, but it's a kind of tested, research-evidence-based survey to best understand, not at an individual level, but at a group level, how our students are experiencing the world. And so, you know, thanks to Obed for its continued work with us. But, you know, both those data sources we'll bring back and share both publicly with, you know, on our website, but also with the committee. So I just wanted to let people know that those are out there and encourage participation. We really want to know how it's going in terms of the distance learning piece. We'll only know that if folks respond. We have some really interesting questions. I've already looked at the initial data about compared to last spring, how do things compare, and that's how we're going to get better, is by hearing not just this is great, that's really important, but also what are the current challenges that folks are facing? Second to last one is that I've met with the town of Amherst, and we are working to make the schools mask-free, no, excuse me, masked zones, not mask-free zones, excuse me, that, much like downtown Amherst is, we've noticed that the community has been using our playgrounds, our basketball courts, other things quite frequently after hours. And again, you know, we see ourselves, our schools, even this weird time, as being places we want our communities to access. But we also want people wearing masks. And I'll be blunt that we've noticed in particularly, some folks coming to our schools who are participating, you know, in activities we want them to do, being active, being outside, not wearing masks. And, you know, again, we'll follow the same town guidance on compliance and what happens with that, but we don't currently have any rules around that. And I, you know, want to thank the Amherst Town Manager for his collaboration. It's already went to the Health Department, you know, the Health Director has already expressed her agreement with that, and we would like, you know, some signage. And just as reminders, that when people are using our facilities after hours, we're still expected to use masks, in the same way that downtown Amherst has that. You know, I think it'll be a challenge with compliance in the same way it is other places, and I still think it's an important message to give, that our schools are places where people shouldn't be wearing masks. So I didn't want you all not to be aware that it's something I've worked on, you know, a little bit, and just thank the town of Amherst for their collaboration on that one. Ready for good news? Okay, so my last one is, we have been the fortunate recipients of multiple grants over the last couple of weeks, and I think I wanted to catch up. The first is both Crocker Farm and the middle school, because of, two years ago, with their status, they were able to apply for tag grants, which is assistance, and both of them are using it around measures of the opportunity gap, and $15,000 each. So that's great news. Both are really trying to engage their staff members and had a best work with students who have, who are not currently being as successful as we'd like them to be. We received a 36, two grants totaling $36,000 for secondary school virtual coursework to support teachers in developing innovative ways that would work well for distance learning at the secondary level. And I'm most excited to share that we received an $84,000 grant by the Amherst Elementary Schools that's supporting students' behavior and mental health and wellness program to, I think, be the first, so I might be misspeaking, and if I do, I will apologize later, to start a Bright program, which is what we have at the middle school, high school, actually have an elementary Bright program, which would be super neat and a little groundbreaking, and the Bright people have been fabulous in helping us think about this. So obviously, in the current situation, we have to think about what that might look like in a virtual context, right? This was applied for before, pre-pandemic, or at least pre-pandemic in Massachusetts. I think that's probably the more accurate way to say it. But, you know, really excited to get that grant and think about how to, next steps on that. The Bright folks are working with us. Over the next couple of weeks, we'll be doing a series for caregivers on how to support students' mental well-being as we head towards winter, where being outside is less of an option, and it's getting a lot darker sooner, and all the emotional challenges that many people, myself included, sometimes face when it gets dark at, you know, 5 o'clock, and what that does for people's moods. So we'll be doing a multi-part series for caregivers. The Bright people are fabulous. We love working with them, and this is really a neat, exciting opportunity to start thinking about what would Bright look like at the elementary level? How do we support students who are going through potentially temporary challenges that way? And, you know, really want to thank, you know, Fay Brady, Diane Chamberlain, were really spearheading the effort on the application of this grant. And so more soon on that, but that's sort of recent news that I wanted to celebrate. So wasn't quite a sandwich of good news, right? It sort of mostly was on the, below the line of good news, but this is good news, and we'll be following up on that. So I wanted to share that with the, you know, committee and the community. Set a record for the longest superintendent update ever, so I apologize to everybody.
Yeah. Any final questions or comments for the superintendent? Seeing none. Thank you, Dr. Morris, for that. I think you said nine, and I wrote down seven, but maybe you collapsed two into that I
Yeah, no, I'm a little differently in my head than when I got into reality, so I could send you my cheat sheet if you want to.
That's great. So given the hour, I didn't have much to say on the chair's update, but I will cede my time on that and move on to number item 10, which is school committee announcements. Does anybody from any of the committees have an announcement? Ms. Lord.
Yes, I would like to invite each and every one of you to our School Equity Task Force meeting tomorrow at 6:00 PM, October 21, Wednesday, and you'll find the information on our district calendar. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other announcements? Mr. Demling.
Yeah, the MAST, the Massachusetts Association of School Committee Annual Conference is happening in a few weeks. Obviously, it's all virtual this time. I've actually never gone, even though I know a bunch of members across the state. It's, you need to register by the 28th, and the committees need to designate you as the representative, and then each committee gets one vote. It's basically like a massive school committee meeting, from what I've been told. Which, you know, so if the sound of that appeals to you, then great. If it doesn't, then no. But I guess in normal times, it's a great way to, you know, kind of recharge and connect with your colleagues, understand what a real eclectic body of people, schools and school committees are across the state. It is also a way to meet people who are doing other things like advocacy. They're voting on a resolution about school funding, they're voting on a resolution about racism and racial awareness, a bunch of other things. All the information is, I've done, is on their, on the website. If you're interested, sometimes committees have on the formal agenda, and then you vote, it's really just designate. So if, if we're having a meeting next week, then it could be done next week as well, but I didn't want to go by without mentioning that, if people had interest.
When we get to agenda planning, we'll get to that. I don't, right now, we don't necessarily have one on the agenda. So if we don't end up with a meeting, I'll just say, if anybody, at least from Amherst and region, if anybody's interested, feel free to email. And I do have one quick announcement, I almost forgot. There's a meeting coming up. I'm currently serving as the representative on the formerly known as LPAC, English Learner Parent Advisory Council, now known as the Bilingual Parent Advisory Council. And they have a meeting coming up on Tuesday next week at 7:00 PM, 7 to 8:00 PM. The, it's going to be obviously on Google Meets, and talking about a variety of things, including the SEAL of Biliteracy, and update on that, as well as updates on ELL and dual language programs, and planning for the school year. So any families are interested, and welcome to join and share ideas and plan for the for the school year for that organization. Okay, moving on to our, I don't see any more announcements, so moving on to our new and continuing business. We are, our first item is the superintendent goals, and Dr. Morris did email us his proposal. Would it be helpful, it might be helpful, since it wasn't in the packet, to share that?
Yeah, I was just going to ask if you'd like me to do that. Sure. Sure, would you like me to briefly walk through them?
Yes, please.
Sure, so you can see that I added the standards, if you didn't see your email later this afternoon, I neglected to do that on the first run. So really, I want to thank you for the really thorough document that the committees sent me. It was, I try not to use superlatives, but it was extremely helpful in writing these goals to know where the committees were, so thank you. The first one was really around, against something we just talked about, social emotional wellness of students, and that's including the multiple pandemics that are going on right now, and the anti-racism curriculum's being finalized. The second goal around diverse needs is more specific to Amherst, but around looking at early childhood education, and what that might look like, and what potential there is to expand it. We are going to move forward with that, finishing off that study that was started last year and delayed because of COVID. The third one was kind of this one about reflecting on what last year and delayed because of COVID. The third one was kind of this one about reflecting on what we're learning this year. You know, it calls out explicitly later start times because that's one that continues to come up in terms of feedback we're receiving. I imagine Emily and her colleagues have thoughts on that one and we want to hear them. You know, it's, it is the first thing that any middle school or high schooler talks about this school year mentions is that classes start at 9:00. I don't want to say every, but I think the majority who I've heard from come on that explicitly. So but there are other things that we should absolutely talk about and, you know, try to figure out what those things are and engage the community to learn from what we're, we're doing something really different than what we've ever done. And I'm not just talking about the virtual, just everything is really different. And I use the desk example, and I'm not claiming that all early childhood educators would want to use desks forever, but it was an interesting reflection three days in of like, I've changed my view now that I've actually experienced teaching young children in desks and what advantages they might have. And there's others, from large and small. The next one was, again, completing that study for the sixth grade move to ARMS and engaging the community, what we planned for spring and couldn't happen. And we'll have to think of different ways to engage the community. But we need to continue to do that and need to move forward. And that'll be important as it relates to the, something that's in the next one, which is the elementary building project. But monitor the expenses, the pandemic, and, you know, we sort of talked a lot about money today and the shortfalls that may arise and that may influence next year. And we still want to look at the capital plan and complete ADA, you know, right? Some of these things can't wait, you know, students with disabilities can't wait years and years for our buildings to become more and more accessible. And the elementary building project, which is going to be an Amherst-only agenda item in a couple of minutes, that needs to continue and we need to keep our eye on that because that's certainly a priority, I know, of the Amherst School Committee. So I tried my best to weave in things that were applied to all three districts when I could and but not exclude. I went back and forth on this about, well, should I not mention the elementary building project? And I don't think I should have goals in this job, in this town, and not mentioning the Amherst Elementary Building Project. That feel, felt a little bit awkward. It would feel too general. So I don't know if I got the right mix, but that's sort of what I was attempting to do is take the document you all offered, offered things that there's broad agreement in the three committees as priorities. And also when there were individual items in individual districts, call them out explicitly so that there wasn't confusion around them. So I'm open to any and all feedback, you know, tonight, or certainly if there's individual feedback people want to give me after they've had a chance to reflect on these and, and offer them. But, you know, I tried to do my best to take the documents you all shared with me and put them into actionable goals.
Mr. Demling?
So I like the list. I think you did a good job translating the school committee document. This is an ambitious list. If you, if you dropped almost all of this, you would still have a very full plate, given what's going on with COVID times. And more might be added. You know, we talked last year and we'll talk a little bit during planning about what if we radically altered next year's school committee calendar and, you know, had school during parts of summer and big ideas like that, that if we seriously start to explore, are going to involve a lot of your time. So, you know, like, I want to set you up to succeed. I don't disagree with any of these things as values, but, you know, does this feel manageable for you, given everything else that's going on?
I don't know what manageable means at this point, and that's sort of a jest and sort of not. I do think the things that need to happen, right? And so, you know, like, I'll take the second one, right? So that's the, probably the most specific and finite one. I'm not sure that we're going to be able to expand preschool access next, in fiscal year 22, given what I know about fiscal year 21 and what I presume about fiscal year 22. We still need to complete the study, right? So, you know, I, I think, you know, we wait too long between two phases of a study and the study becomes meaningless because it actually doesn't, you know, one part doesn't speak to the other part. So I do think it is. I think, you know, much like this past year, as long as the committees are comfortable that things may change, right, and priorities may change, you know, I think, you know, we had a good model, in my opinion, for that and how the evaluation worked and how goals worked this year. And as long as we keep that spirit, I feel like it's, it's probably the right approach to have.
I had a similar question, but I, but you, for me at least, you've answered it well. So, and thank you. Any other comments, input, questions? Dr. Morris?
I typically do this and she definitely can ignore me and that's fine. But I wonder if Emily just has some thoughts, if some of these goals speak to, you know, what students, particularly at the high school level. And I'm not asking you to be representative sample of all students at the high school. But as you look at this list, are these the type of things that you think we all should be working on to improve the experience of high school students? And, you know, that's a yes, no question. I probably shouldn't have asked it that way. But if you had any thoughts to share, we're open to hearing them, or I am, and I think I speak for the committee. And if not, or if you want to think about it, get back to me. That's fine, too. But I always love hearing from the student experience. I want to give you the opportunity explicitly.
I think I'll get back to you. I'm going to talk to some more students and sort of, yeah.
Awesome. I'll email you this document explicitly so you have it on file. And again, I'm very open to hearing what students would think and adjusting it based on that because that's, you're all why we're here. So I'll make sure you get that.
Any other thoughts for now? We will be coming back to this at a future meeting. We're not voting on this tonight. So. Okay, great. Thank you, Dr. Morris.
Thank you.
And now we're moving on to our next item, which is future agenda planning, which we've alluded to multiple times. I can try to pull that up if, to share that. Just give me one second. I can't seem to find it in my email.
Do you want me to, do you want me to take a look for it?
Yeah, if you could.
So I can project what's in the packet, but if we're gonna edit.
Still being here. Oh, I found it. So I will share. Okay, are folks seeing this? Let me see if I can make it bigger. Is that better? Good, okay. So this is, this is just a, it looks more official than I would say it is. This is just to start the conversation and look at sort of a potential schedule so that we can then, in the past, what we've been, what we, the last year, sort of used this document to map out the full year where we could. So once we have finalized our goals, there's a lot that we know about what our future agendas might be looking like. And we found it helpful, just speaking from the Amherst Committee perspective, as well as the region, to map them out where possible, because then we, then we can, we know what to expect and we know sort of when we're adding things to our plate, you know, what impact that might have on sort of future long meetings. Now we're moving to two and a half hours right now. So, so in the past, the region has met typically twice a month, every other week, and Amherst has met once a month. I didn't add Pelham on here because, I'm sorry, but I didn't know what Pelham's schedule usually has been. So, and we had talked, as I recall at our last meeting, there was both interest in having joint, continuing joint meetings where it made sense. And then also thinking of, as we just heard, Pelham needs, Pelham only meetings and given some of these goals that are Amherst only, potentially need for Amherst only meetings as well. So I didn't, I didn't note going forward when, you know, which ones might be joint meetings and which ones might not. And so I guess the question for us to consider is, do we want to map those out? Or do we want, you know, which ones might be joint and which ones might not? Do we want to do that sort of on a monthly basis? Look at it and figure out which ones might be joint? And just sort of, you know, use this as our starting point and adjust as needed and as things come up throughout the year. So I just spoke a lot. So welcome, welcome ideas and suggestions from anybody on the three committees. Ms. Dancer?
It seems to me that at least for the next little bit, that we might try to plan as we go in terms of whether we're going to have joint meetings or not, depending on perhaps what the Amherst Committee decides they need to talk about, what the region needs to talk about and what Pelham needs to talk about. But certainly, it seems to me there are going to be some times when we're still going to all want to be in the same meeting. Just my thoughts.
So, sorry, I saw some people moving to, but just to restate, if I'm hearing, would you be, is, is what you're suggesting sort of put a placeholder that every time there's a region meeting, I'm here, put in paren's joint, potential joint meeting? Is that sort of what you're, yep?
Yeah, I think we could do that. And then if we canceled the joint meeting, I don't think anybody's going to complain.
Certainly for the Amherst representatives, it won't make too much difference. Mr. Demling, did you have your hand up?
Yeah, one, I'm not sure how much of, many of us are going to show up to that November 3rd meeting. We might want to move that date. I think there's something happening that night. You're not getting the joke? No, sorry. No, I think, I think in general, like laying the tracks in, directly in front of us has been working out pretty well. I mean, maybe it's been much more difficult and chaotic from, for your point of view, because you're the one who has to actually schedule and post it. But I think, I think it's a lot, it's like weather forecasting. I think it's a lot clearer whether we'll need a joint meeting when we're a week or two out from it than when we're, you know, three or four months out. So, and I think, I think, given the size of our joint committees, people have been remarkably flexible in terms of, you know, oh, all of a sudden we need a joint meeting, or this has to be Amherst and region. And we get very high attendance. So I'm okay with not having a set schedule months in advance, you know, if, if this stuff, if this is a straw man and it has to move around quite a bit based on need, that's, I mean, that works for me. And it seems, seems, it seems to have worked for others in the past.
Ms. Hall?
Yeah, I would say the same. I'm, I'm fine having it be as needed. I mean, my attendance can continue. What else are we going to do, right? So, I don't have plans.
Any other thoughts? I think, you know, part of, part of my motivation is also just so that we, you know, sort of set this agreement that tentatively we'll be meeting every other week unless that we have a need for another, you know, adding a meeting, canceling a meeting, or moving a meeting, right? But I think that also helps that the community understand, like, when is the next meeting and sort of see forward, you know, and, and everybody knows it's subject to change. I think, you know, at least sort of seeing that, that what the cadence is can be helpful for the community as well. And so then looking at that November 3rd date, I don't know, I was sort of like thinking people might want something else less stressful to watch, but you don't think people will tune away and check in on the joint committee meetings? Mr. Manino?
I plan to watch TV 24 hours a day on that date.
So do we want to look to the week after that, the, or the next week, or what are, or just a different day during that week of the second? Ms. Dancer?
What if we just move it to Thursday? Is that going to conflict with anything else for people?
I have a conflict that night. I could definitely do the Wednesday, the 4th, I guess. Yep, the 4th. I would have a hard time doing that Thursday. Yeah, that's the last Thursday I have a conflict. I do have a conflict that Thursday.
Are folks okay with the Wednesday, the 4th? Seeing lots of thumbs up. Great. And if there, the other question that I had was earlier in this meeting, we talked about, Ms. Lord brought up the idea of advocacy work for maintaining Chapter 7, the funding for FY22. I think, I'm not sure if I'm praising, I just scribbled that down as you were speaking and I wanted to know if that was something that we wanted to consider a resolution on that next meeting that might be, building on what Dr. Morris said, that might be too late, might be better for us to do that individually. But just sort of tossing that out there for the committee, is that something that the committee would be interested in addressing then? See a few nodding heads. Okay, so we'll add that. And Dr. Morris, does that timing work for update on, an update on Q1?
It does, yeah.
Great.
Yeah, and I added the ASP piece as well, potentially.
Oh, right, okay.
That would be a region only, but it would be, I think, a relatively brief item.
Okay. Great. Mr. Demling?
Yeah, before we leave agenda planning, I did want to see if there was general committee interest in exploring this idea of major changes to the FY22 calendar slash structure. This is brought up, I think, in public comment last week, or that we received offline, this idea of starting this school year a lot earlier, maximizing time during the summer. Not to get into the pros and cons of it, but is there, is there community, is there committee interest in exploring it? Because if there is, this is something that we would want to probably start looking at earlier rather than later.
Mr. Manino? And then Ms. Spitzer?
I think we should explore it earlier rather than later.
And I saw some other thumbs up, so I think that's a, that's a yes, so we'll add that. We need, now that we have the raised hand, we need a thumbs up emoji, a reaction in here, too. Ms. Dancer, did you have a question?
Did you mean Spitzer? Because I, I have my hand up.
Oh, sorry. Go ahead, Ms. Spitzer. But I also see Ms. Dancer's raised hand, too. But go ahead, Ms. Spitzer.
Sorry. So I just wanted to second that. I mean, I think I brought it up also prior to the public comment at, when we were going over the calendar. The only thing I wanted to flag as something to consider is that I think similar to some of the other things we've talked about tonight, might be part of contract. But, so I'm just curious about like the process by which can we talk about it first before we enter? Just wanted to raise that as a process issue.
Dr. Morris?
It certainly would be part of negotiations, but I think in this particular regard, I don't see any, it's not, it's not part of any current negotiations. I think as long as it's spoken about as the committee exploring an interest, knowing that it would have to be negotiated, I don't see any, you know, I thought about this one and at first I had more of a negative read on it. And then I kind of thought more about it. And I think the committee should feel free to talk about it, knowing that any decision a committee would come to would have to be, go through impact bargaining committee would come to would have to be, go through impact bargaining with, with bargaining units. But I don't, I don't see as a need to hold off on that at all, given that it's not currently a topic of negotiations, and, you know, as long as you have that caveat in mind, I don't see a conflict.
Good, okay.
Miss, there's a hand up. Ms. Hall, I think.
Sorry. I'm looking for a white emoji. Sorry. Opened. I, well, and I don't know if it makes sense to follow up with this later, but Dr. Morris, do you think that next week is too soon for a Pelham-only meeting to talk enrollment and other matters? Or do you want to take this offline, and we can, I can follow up with the rest of the committee after we talk?
I don't think it's too soon. I don't think I'll have particularly more data then, but I think some of the questions about comparing to past years will be easily to, easy to accumulate, and that'd be fine with me to meet next week in Pelham. We could certainly follow up line on the agenda, but I do think this is an acute issue we shouldn't wait too long to talk about.
Okay, all right. Okay, I would, I'll check in with committee members and you on availability another time, but let's assume next week. All right, thanks.
Okay. Okay, if there's no other comments, and again, given our late hour, we'll move along to warrant reports. I have two, I see Ms. Spitzer nodding. Ms. Spitzer, why don't you go?
So I authorized by my signature to payables in the amount of $461,274.64 for the warrant dated October 6, 2020. This included general fund expenses of $158,644.14 revolving fund expenses of $140,963.30 and grant fund expenses of $153,817.20, and other funds for capital in the amount of $7,850. And I signed it on October 8, 2020. In addition, I authorized by my signature to payables in the amount of $637,052.09 for a warrant dated October 8, 2020, and this included general fund expenses in that amount. And it was dated, signed by me and dated October, on October 8, 2020. And then, one last one. On October 9, or, sorry, for a warrant dated, this one doesn't have the nice cover sheet for me. I signed a warrant dated October 7, 2020 for payroll expenses in the amount of $394,703.51. That is, sorry, I'm just looking at the document, and then, let me correct myself, please, because I find the cover sheets at the end. So I'm going to scrap what I just wrote, and I'm going to read one more time, sorry. So I, Carrie Spitzer, authorized by my signature to payables in the amount of $758,689.49 for the warrant dated October 7, 2020, and this authorized payroll in that amount for October 7, 2020. And I signed that on October 9, 2020. Thank you.
And Ms. Hall?
Okay. I authorized by my signature to payables in the amount of $75,320.64 for the warrant dated October 16, 2020. This included general fund expenses of $37,241.97 and grant fund expenses of $38,078.67, and I signed that on October 16. And then, I authorized by my signature to payables in the amount of $58,428.22 for the warrant dated October 21, 2020. And that was, that full amount, the $58,428.22 was all for payroll, and I signed that on October 19.
And I have two for the AMERST district. I, Alice McDonald, authorized by my signature to payables in the amount of $657,379.48 for a warrant dated October 7, 2020. That was all payroll in the amount of $657,379.48, and I signed that on October 8. And I authorized by my signature to payables in the amount of $143,303.38 for a warrant dated October 9, 2020. This included general fund expenses of $68,147.39 revolving fund expenses of $180.40 and grant fund expenses of $15,536.47, FEMA fund of $31,04, sorry, $31,843.19, COVID relief grant in the amount of $632, CARES Fund, CARES Act fund of $26,782.93, and a gift to the school in the amount of $181. And I signed that on October 14. We now move on to gifts, and in our packets, we had two gifts, one for the region and one for AMERST, and I actually have that all set up so I can project. Are folks seeing this yet? Okay. Would somebody like, from AMERST, like to make a motion?
I'm happy to.
Ms. Spitzer?
I move that the AMERST School Committee accept the following gifts from the Fort River Parent Council, number 2105, to support the Fort River Library for anti-racism materials in the amount of $500, and from Martha Alver, number 995877, to support Crocker Farm at the principal's discretion in the amount of $10 for a total of $510.
Second? Moved by Spitzer, second by McDonald. Any discussion? Move to a vote, the AMERST School Committee. Mr. Demling?
Demling, aye.
Mr. Harrington?
Harrington, aye.
Ms. Lord?
Lord, aye.
Ms. Spitzer?
Spitzer, aye.
And McDonald, aye. Motion passes five to zero. And now, from the region, we have one gift. I'll make the motion. I move for the Regional School Committee that we accept the following gift from Jennifer Casasanto, Donor Advised Fund, Raymond James Charitable Fund, number, check number 153143, to support remote teaching needs in the amount of $800. Second? Moved by McDonald, second by Spitzer. We'll take a roll call vote of the region. Mr. Demling?
Demling, aye.
Mr. Harrington?
Harrington, aye.
Ms. Kenny?
Kenny, aye.
Ms. Lord?
Lord, aye.
Ms. Seager?
Seager, aye.
Ms. Spitzer?
Spitzer, aye.
Ms. Stanser?
Stanser, aye.
Mr. Sullivan?
Sullivan, aye.
And McDonald, aye. And the motion passes nine to zero. Okay. An exception. Okay. I move to adjourn the Regional School Committee. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by McDonald, second by Kenny. No discussion, and we'll take a roll call vote. Mr. Demling?
Demling, aye.
Mr. Harrington?
Harrington, aye.
Ms. Kenny?
Kenny, aye.
Ms. Lord?
Lord, aye.
Ms. Seager?
Seager, aye.
Ms. Spitzer?
Spitzer, aye.
Ms. Stanser?
Stanser, aye.
Sullivan, aye.
And McDonald, aye. And the region is adjourned. Chair, Hall?
Oh, you have a question or a comment?
That was just a goodbye, sorry. I thought.
Oh. I'm so confused by hands tonight. I'm not getting any of it right. All right, on that note, I will move to adjourn the Pelham School Committee. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Moved by Hall, seconded by Stanser?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right, roll call vote, Ms. Stanser.
Stanser, aye.
Ms. Kenny?
Kenny, aye.
Ms. Barlow?
Barlow, aye.
Mr. Manino?
Manino, aye.
And Hall, aye.
It seems that, we, we all seem so large now on the screen, because everybody, there's only five of us. So we have one, one agenda item, and it's to hear an update on the MSBA elementary school building project. So I'll ask Dr. Morris if he can help us out with that.
Yeah, sure, I'll be brief. So the next, well, the next, the first meeting of the Building Committee is next Tuesday, the 27th, at 7:30 in the morning. So the Building Committee has been formed and populated with members through the town manager and that process with the town council. People have been sworn in. So we're looking forward to that meeting and getting, getting things off to a good start, so we're, we're raring to go with that. In terms of the district level, the non-larger committee, we've been in multiple conversations with the MSBA around enrollment and, you know, enrollment projection. And so at this point, we continue to go back and forth. I have another conversation with them later this week, just trying to narrow down our options that we want to study. Again, there's no surprises here. You know, we are looking at an option as was required of just looking at the building as is and just managing that, an option of 600 students, you know, in a school, that's either K-5 or K-6, depending on what we do. And then perhaps somewhere in-between model, you know, if, if kind of the Crocker Farm study that came out, if the town decided it opted to spend money on its own, the MSBA is very clear that that, they wouldn't participate in an expansion of Crocker Farm. That's, it would be a townwide decision of, of something in between those two numbers. So, you know, they have their own projections, they have their own resources, it's been really helpful, the town, someone from the town hall has been helpful in terms of people knowing about new developments and rentals, and how to look at our town, which is funky in terms of how to analyze it from a housing perspective, because it doesn't follow typical trends that most communities do. You know, we've, for instance, a higher rate of rentals of single-family homes than most communities would have, that, you know, that kind of thing. Townwide, there's more transancy because of the nature of the universities and the colleges that affect it. So we've had some really useful conversations. When anything, we would get to resolution, I'll bring it back to the committee, that's not where we are, but as it always is, my experience, a very collaborative effort from the MSBA staff, I feel like they're incredibly professional, knowledgeable, and they also understand AMERST, which is really nice to know. So that's sort of where we are, is we're still looking at enrollment, enrollment, you know, numbers and what that would look like. We are going to study multiple options, this is required as part of the MSBA study, and our first meeting is next week. So that's sort of the quick summary. I'm happy to answer any questions anyone might have.
Ms. Spitzer?
So two quick ones. I'm curious, are those, the 7:30 a.m. morning meetings, are those going to be livestreamed and recorded, or, I'm just curious about access to those, if, if at all. And then, the second question was, you know, with the numbers that you were showing us early and the decline in enrollment, I mean, that kind of concerned me for, or raised a red flag for me thinking about the elementary schools. And it seemed like our three elementary schools were actually a little bit less, and particularly Fort River was the smallest decline percentage-wise, which was nice to see, because I think that's, I, I, I don't know, but I'm just curious about your thoughts on like, do we need to be, it's late, do we need to be concerned about that decline in enrollment with regard to the MSBA project?
Yeah, their projections are set, and they were based off prior year's information, so, you know, they've been very clear, as they always are, being so thoughtful, that they know enrollments right now are really atypical and changing, and their practice is that they're going to stay the course with their methods. And so, you know, we were explicit that we're seeing a change, and they say every district they're working with is seeing some level of change. So we are moving forward, you know, with, with the projections that were developed from, you know, the multiple sources they have. And they're looking primarily at birth years, and when they say survival rate, they mean how many kids were born five years prior, and how many students show up in the public schools. And I think that word could be misinterpreted, given the context, but, so they have all those things, and they know the survival rate's going to be super wacky for every district right now, and so they're, you know, my sense is that they're understanding of that and not trying to overdramatize the impact on a building project from that. The, the meeting is posted with the Zoom link, because it's, it's the town, so it's already been posted on that. The topics are call to order introductions, discuss the charge of the elementary school building committee, identify a chair or vice chair of the elementary school, and vice chair, excuse me, of the elementary school building committee, meeting schedule, future planning, items not anticipated by the chair 48 hours before the meeting, kind of funny because none of the chairs know, public comment, and adjourn. So that's been set and posted by town staff, and the link and how to access it and all that's on the town website where meetings will be posted.
So on that, following up on that thought about meetings posted, we did create, the district did create a page on the elementary, the building project, and I wonder, I don't want to create extra, extra work, but I think there'll be some sort of expectation that sort of agendas and minutes will be, will be posted there. So that might be helpful to sort of start that habit now from the very first beginning so that people know that.
Agreed, yeah. Thank you.
Seeing none? Great. So then we have one last agenda item. The AMERST School Committee. I'll second that. So moved by Spitzer, second by McDonald. No discussion. And Ms. Spitzer?
Spitzer, aye.
And I'm going out of order now, I'm going just by on-screen. Ms. Lord?
Lord, aye.
Mr. Harrington?
Harrington, aye.
Mr. Demling?
Demling, nay.
McDonald, aye. By Mr. Demling's opposition, we are.
Make it for the record that I said nay.
Passes four.
I am breaking the streak. I am channeling the spirit of Mr. Sullivan.
He, you know, three hours, this isn't long enough. On that note, we are adjourned officially, so, thank you. Good night.
Right.